All right, we're going to go ahead and start our City Commission meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Al, roll call.
Benson.
Benson's here.
Brunick?
Here.
Johnson?
Present.
Mybaum?
Mybaum is present.
Minor?
Here.
Schram?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Villanueva?
Present.
Mayor Moser?
Here.
City Manager Leon?
Here.
City Attorney Denherter?
Here.
All right, we're moving on to get an approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of July 12, 2021. What's your pleasure?
Move the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Aye.
Sorry, I'm going to get used to giving you guys enough time to answer. I apologize about that. Any of those in favor say nay, or opposed say nay, and anybody abstaining. All right, minutes are approved. Moving on in the agenda, we move to the City Manager's report. So I'll turn it over to City Manager Leon.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission, and the public. I have a couple of things for you. First, we've received a letter, actually it was sent to you, Mayor, regarding the long-range transportation plan for South Dakota Department of Transportation. They are interested in seeking public input on their long-range plan, and there is a link which we will provide to you, Commissioners, where you can watch a presentation about some of the things they're thinking about in their long-range plan, and then you can provide comment, too. So we'll be sending that out and likely putting something on our social media, so if the public wants to participate in making those comments, they can. So comments have to be in by August 6th, so we'll be working to get that information out to you. Our next budget meeting has already been set. You may or may not remember doing that because I didn't, but Colleen reminded me that you set your next budget meeting for August 9th, so that's a regular City Commission meeting night, and you set it for 5:30. So if you just put that on your calendar, we'll be talking that evening about the rest of the budget, minus utility rates, minus Triple B, so general fund and some of the other, all the other funds that are included in operating. So we'll look forward to that. We also have August 10th on hold if you need it, so, which would be also at 5:30 as well, but we're thinking, because we took care of Triple B this evening, and we've already done our capital improvement plan, that you probably will be okay with the one meeting. So we'll remind you of that as that gets closer. We have incorporated a little bit of public relations into our morning water walking. Last week, Chief Foot and Sergeant Bruning came to water walking, and they had coffee with some water walkers, and as a result, they got roped into the "pluck-a-duck" event with the Kiwanis, and I was there for a portion of the coffee, and they got a lot of advice and good ideas, and I think the folks liked having them there. So one of the comments made was that they would like to talk to more city staff during their water walking. So our baristas this week are going to be Dave Mingo and Dana Schmidt, so that'll be a fun opportunity to talk with some folks at the Heuther Family Aquatic Center. Chief Foot had a comment in his SIM that one of you asked about hearing more about, so I'd like to invite Chief Foot to the podium to tell us a little bit more about it. Whichever one you like.
Okay. Is it on?
It's on.
It's on? Okay. We had an officer that made a traffic stop on a couple that was traveling at a high rate of speed, speed in town, and this couple decided that their experience with the officer was good enough that they donated $40 to the police department as a thank you for what we do as a regular basis. So not only did they get the ticket, they also, they also gave the City of Yankton or the City Police Department money to put towards good things. So it just shows that this officer that handled that, which was Officer Cole Larson, did a professional job and did well for the city, made a great impression on this couple, so.
So we have, are fortunate that we have a lot of good feedback from the community about things our officers do and our city staff does, some known and some unknown. We had officers, you know, often buy, regularly end up buying, you know, a car seat for maybe somebody that doesn't have a car seat and needs one, and then they help them install. Or, you know, we've had officers that have helped folks with groceries because they have a call at their home and they just see they're just in need, and that comes out of their pockets, and they do that out of their generosity. And sometimes we hear about things, but oftentimes we don't. So these are the caliber of folks that we have working, not just for the police department, but for the city. So it's good to lift those folks up and be able to let people know sometimes that we're not just giving tickets and saying, you know, no to things. We also care about people, and they're part of our community. I really don't have a lot to say. We're busy working on the budget and enjoying the last few weeks of summer here. Our attendance at the Aquatic Center continues to be great. I have my intern working on a report for you about the statistics, which you will see here, I believe, in your next Commission Information Memorandum. So I'm happy to answer your questions, Commissioners, otherwise I will let you move on to your business.
Are there any questions for the City Manager? Okay, just want to make sure I give Commissioners Benson and Mybaum a chance, too. Seeing no movement, or mics being turned on, we will move on to public appearances. This is the time and place for anybody that would like to address the City Commission on an item not on the agenda. They're all glued to their seats. All right, moving on, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item number one is consideration of memorandum 21-157 recommending approval of an application from Martha's Crafts for a transient merchant license for Martha's Crafts from July 27, 2021 to August 27, 2021, and this is for a craft booth at the Joadine's Frontage. Item number two is establishing August 9, 2021, as the date for a public hearing on a request for a special events malt beverage on-sale liquor license for September 24 through the 26, 2021, from Stripes Inc., doing business as Mojo's Third Street Pizza, Jeff Dehoff, owner, for an event being held in Riverside Park. And number three is to establish August 9, 2021, as the date for a public hearing on the recus for a special events retail on-sale liquor license for one day, August 15, 2021, from Boomers Inc., Gary Boom, President, doing business as Boomers Lounge, Zombies Realm, 109 East Third Street. What is your pleasure?
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda?
Just curious, with number two, what is that September event? Does anyone know?
I do.
Oh, is it for the archery?
It is. It is for an event tied to the World Championships that are taking place in September. That is for an event called Archery Fest, which falls on the three days of the finals shoot for the World Championships. That is going to be held at Riverside Park, and there'll be food vendors and activities and all sorts of things. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda item, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
Aye.
Anybody abstaining? All right, consent agenda passes. We have no business under old business, so we will move on to new business, and item number one is consideration of memorandum 21-153 regarding Resolution 21-60, a conditional use permit for an expansion of the current use in the form of an outdoor event shelter on two lots located at the center, who is the applicant, address 900 Whiting Drive. What is your pleasure?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I see Mr. Mingo has moved to the mic. Dave, did you want to fill the Commission in on anything related to this project?
I would be happy to try and answer any questions you may have, as you can see from the packet. The best way to describe it would be, the project is a large picnic shelter located north of their west parking lot. All the adjacent property owners were notified, given the opportunity to attend a public hearing at the Planning Commission. A couple of folks did show up and had some comments, but did not express any opposition to the project, so staff and the Planning Commission both recommend approval of the project.
Any further questions for Mr. Mingo or discussion on this agenda item?
I know from the Planning Commission meeting, some of the thought behind this is to give the members at the center opportunity to have some outdoor activities that they don't have now. So it was just, I think it was well thought out, well planned out, and should be a good benefit for those that attend those activities.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. Al, roll call.
Benson.
Benson, aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number two under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-154 regarding Resolution 21-61 on plots A and B in Flake's subdivision, Kelly Investments LLC, owner, and the address is 610 West 23rd Street. Dave, did you kind of want to walk us through this? I do know this is tied to some of our flood mitigation that we're doing, so maybe you want to walk the Commission through this and what this resolution is asking for before an actual motion is taken?
Sure. As you know, in properties that are adjacent to the Marden Creek corridor, primarily, we've attempted to, when opportunities present themselves, acquire either an easement or ownership of the corridor itself, including the creek, and enough space on one bank or the other to tie in with a maintenance access. So what that maintenance access has looked like in the past, it's developed in phases from just a flat place we can drive equipment when it's dry, to crushed material surface, all the way to concrete surface eventually as funding permits. Mr. Kyle Kelly, who owns the Marden Creek Professional Center, our building there, has agreed through discussions anyway to this point, nothing in writing, to go ahead and allow us to plat off that portion of the property that would allow for further consideration of that transfer. One of the stipulations that he and I discussed, and it makes sense to me, is that he would, even if the property does transfer, we would record a resolution that includes language that says he's able to include that square footage in his density calculations for the developable portion of the lot. So what does that mean? It means that the density of the overall parcel won't increase any more than it could have if it would have remained entirely owned by the private sector, but it's kind of a win-win because it gives a chance for the city to accomplish our goals with the creek and also allow him the maximum capabilities of development on the portion of his parcel that is able to be constructed on. So staff and the Planning Commission have recommended approval with that stipulation included in the resolution. If you read it, the entire square footage of Lot 5 shall be considered when calculating the allowable densities of coverage on Lot A, and then Lot B is the north part of the lot that hopefully the city ends up holding title to.
And Dave, just to clarify, the owner is voluntarily signing that over, and that is undevelopable land?
All of that is correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Mingo? If not, I would ask what your pleasure is for this agenda item?
Still moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Anybody in the public like to make a comment on this agenda item? All right, Al, roll call.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Benson, aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number three under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-156 regarding the 2021-2026 Yankton County Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan Project, and I believe this is identifying, the group meant to identify potential future hazards that are countywide, and the approval of this would be for the inclusion of identified hazard mitigation actions in a revision of this mitigation plan.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I would, Dave, are you the one that can kind of address what exactly is all being asked for here?
Sure. Every five years, Planning and Development District III helps Yankton County prepare what's called a pre-disaster mitigation plan. Of course, the City of Yankton, being a part of Yankton County, we include some bullet point suggestions for things that we think are important. Also, that's what this is. This is just the City Commission formalizing an administrative document that calls out eight things that we're working on or hope to work on within the next five years that are all associated with disaster preparedness. Participating in the flood plane, in the National Flood Insurance Program, obviously, we want to keep doing that. Continue to work on projects along Marden Creek, your last action included, step in that direction. Discussion of whenever we build public structures, whether or not to include tornado shelters, you know, at critical gathering facilities. Emergency generators, we've seen success in grant programs in getting generators at the center and at City Hall already, so, and at the fire station, I believe. So all things that we're working on or continue to plan to work on to be storm-ready, basically what it says, pre-disaster mitigation planning.
Great, thank you. Appreciate all the efforts this group is putting in to hopefully maybe not have flooding reoccur in Yankton in our lifetime, anyway. So any other questions or thoughts on this? All right, we have a motion and a second. Anybody in the audience want to address us on this issue? Before I go, roll call. Al.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye, Benson.
Brunick?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number four under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-158 regarding an addendum to the collective bargaining agreement between AFSCME and the City of Yankton, and I will ask City Manager Leon to walk us through what's being proposed here before I ask for a motion.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission and the public. As you know, we have two negotiated contracts now at the City of Yankton. We have two labor units. AFSCME is our, what I would call civilian union, covering various departments in the city, and then we have the Fraternal Order of Police, which is, obviously, covers the police department. This particular agenda item pertains only to the AFSCME representative, represented employees. So those include about 80 positions. We have about 20, 2022 active paying members, but all are represented, all of those 80 positions. So this year, we were up for renegotiation of wages, and so we have some wage items that we've tentatively agreed to with the union. So the recommendation before you tonight is to approve effective January 1, 2022, that each eligible employee receive a 4% cost of living base adjustment and a 1%, or excuse me, and a one-step increase on the pay scale. The step is about 1.26% as you, some of you are aware. And that's if they're eligible. So just to remind you, we have a 20-step pay scale. Some folks are already at step 20, so they wouldn't receive a step. They would just, the scale would just shift for them on the cost of living. They would still receive the cost of living. This is a two-year agreement, then, so then effective January 1, 2023, each eligible employee would receive a 3% cost of living base adjustment and a 1% step increase on the pay scale, or one step increase on the pay scale if they're eligible. So that's the first part of the tentative language, which is before you this evening. A few years ago, the Commission committed to a 3% for three-year agreement, which was really, was really beneficial in getting some of our positions a little bit more competitive. We don't want to lose any of that ground, certainly, and we know the labor market is getting tighter and tighter. So we think this is, given what we see with inflation, a fair and appropriate proposal. We also have a recommendation for all employees classified as differential shift employees, that they're paid a shift differential of $1 an hour in addition to their regular base hourly rate for the shift differential. So if you're working overnight or the evening shift at the wastewater plant, for example, that would apply to you for your shift. We don't have a lot of those positions, but there are some. Dispatch would be, you know, considered one of those, the evening shift there. We also have some language in there regarding incentive pay and market adjustments. So as all of you know, it's tough to retain employees, it's tough to recruit employees, and we also want to make sure we are rewarding employees for innovation and hard work and good work. So where we have been in the past is if we have a language agreement and with the collective bargaining unit and market conditions change, for example, it becomes very difficult to recruit people, which that is the case we're in, all we can offer is what's been agreed to. We can't offer anymore, we can't offer any, you know, we're just tied to that. That doesn't work really well. It might work well if we were all cogs and spacely sprockets, for those of you who watch the Jets, but we're not. We have a lot of different things going on. We've got librarians. That market's different than our sanitation truck operators. That market's different than dispatchers. That market's different than folks who have CDLs, which is a hot commodity, you know, anymore. And so we have to be able to have that flexibility, and we're very fortunate that our collective bargaining unit members understand that, and they understand that a one size just doesn't fit all when we have some very specialized folks. Also, we believe that if you are taking on more and you've attained a certain certification or level of education, you should be recognized for that, and part of recognition is financial benefit. So if we have a water operator, for example, that goes from passing their first level exam to their third level exam, we can't give them any more for their work unless it's negotiated through the contract. Well, that's not appropriate way to do business. And so we've set out that language with the collective bargaining unit to be able to do that. Now, they would like to be notified of those changes that are made, so they have an understanding of what's happening, but that gives us a lot more opportunity to recruit, retain, reward, and stay competitive, and that's really what we think we want to do based on the values that the Commission set forth in their strategic plan some years ago. So we want to continue to commit to that. All that being said, this does not apply to the Fraternal Order of Police, does not apply to the nonrepresented positions. So, you know, some of the salaried positions are not represented here, or there are some positions, for example, you know, human resources or IT that are not under the collective bargaining unit per the state statute. So we'll address those at a later time. But I'd like to answer questions, if you have them, about the language before you, and let you decide which way you want to go here.
I just want to applaud the negotiating team on both sides for allowing some flexibility in our pay structure as we face really acute shortages in employees in some areas more than others, but we're really getting to a point where $15 is minimum wage with a lot of our fast food chains paying that and others. And we just need to be able to meet employees where their expectations are and where the market is at. So I think this sets us up well to make sure we're getting quality employees into the future and retaining them as well.
I agree. Our human capital, I guess, is our, a good capital project to make sure we're taken care of and keeping the city running. Other questions for the City Manager on this issue? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion from the City Commission? All right, anybody in the public want to make a comment on this agenda item? Seeing no movement. Al, roll call.
Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Benson, aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number five under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-159 regarding a bike repair station in Memorial Park, which is in conjunction with an Eagle Scout project. What is your pleasure? Move to approve? Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I do believe we have a special guest in the audience tonight. So I would ask Ryland Brunick, who is actually going for his Eagle Scout award, to step to the podium, and I'll ask the first question, Ryland, if that's okay with you. What made you decide to pick this project for your Eagle Scout? Why? I'm curious what made you decide to contribute to the city in this way as you're earning your badge?
Well, major reason why is because when this idea was brought up to me, it really stuck with me. When I was, when I ride my bike back from work at ACE, I always would drive by the pool, and every single day that area is completely filled up with bikes. I have seen times when there is not a single spot open, and a lot of the times, I've realized that there are a lot of issues that can be on your bikes that are easy to fix but have really big impacts. A simple screw loose could make it incapable of riding your bike, and this would make it viable for some people to be able to fix it and have it in easily inaccessible spot for all these kids who are going there.
Awesome. Maybe inform us a little bit. I must tell you, I'm a little naive in the Boy Scouts. So what does becoming an Eagle Scout mean, and how do you get to that level?
Well, from a standpoint of what an Eagle Scout means, in my mind, it's, you go through the process, and I went through Cub Scouts, you go through all these steps to get to this point of achieving that, and it's supposed to be something that indicates the amount of effort you've put in and what you've worked towards and those you can show that you did and how you earned it. So that's really what the purpose of it provides for me.
Awesome. Other commissioners? Commissioner Dad Brunick, any questions? Well, I appreciate you thinking about the city on doing a project like this. For those that aren't aware, this would actually be our second bike repair station. The first one was put in down by the water treatment plant, and I'm sure has been heavily used down at Riverside Park. So this gives us a great location, as you mentioned, Ryland, with the amount of traffic that we now have at the Huthar Family Aquatic Center, and really having a midpoint in town, kind of centrally located, to be able to have folks to, I believe, the bike repair station is that, and then also air, like an air pump or something like that that goes with that, to be able to do that. Awesome. Well, I appreciate, again, on behalf of the city, let me thank you for thinking of us and doing a project like this as tied to your Eagle Scout.
And thank you for considering this.
You bet. Any other questions to this motion? All right. Anybody in the audience like to address the city commission on this agenda item? All right. Al, roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Benson, aye.
Brunick.
Stop speaking.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Ryland, do you have your bike station and repair station going into Memorial Park? Thank you for your work on this and good luck with the rest of your process in becoming an Eagle Scout. All right. Number six under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-162 and resolution 21-63 regarding a request by the Yankton High School for a special events parking ordinance to be in place during the March to the Meridian on October 9, 2021. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I see we have another special guest in the audience. Would you like to come to the podium? Give us your name and tell us a little bit about the event. Third annual one, I believe, right?
Yes, it is a third annual. So my name is Mrs. Wenisch, Gwen Wenisch. I previously was the middle school band director here with Yankton School District. This year, I am the head high school band director. So I've been chatting with a lot of different community members as we went through and did our whole waiver process. And we're incredibly excited about the opportunity to make it live again. This past year, we went virtual just because of the COVID craziness that affected everybody. So we're excited to hopefully bring a large number of groups in. We have a lot of schools that have expressed interest in coming. We, at our top, the highest count that we had for bands participating in the parade before was 13. We're hoping to exceed that this year, fingers crossed. So yeah, it's going to be a great event where a lot of people are coming into town to see what different kids can do with music and see what they're doing on the streets for formations and fun things that'll eventually carry over in the afternoon to our Crane Youngworth football field. So we're incredibly excited and ready to hit the ground running.
Great. Any questions? I didn't realize you moved to the high schools, so congratulations on that.
Yeah, yeah.
I know both my kids went through the band program in middle school.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome. All right. And just to reiterate, this is a closing of Walnut from Second to Third Street, which does include the intersections and from Third Street from Walnut to Mulberry, also Levy Street from Mulberry to Capitol, and the lower deck of the bridge, the top deck would remain Seeing no other discussion from the commission, we have a motion and a second. Anybody in the public like to make a comment? All right. Seeing none. Al, roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Good luck with your event.
Thank you very much.
Yes. All right. That concludes our new business. We have nothing under other business, so I would move for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss contractual litigation and personal matters.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right. We will move into executive session.